All right, calls are ordered. Meeting of the Committee of the Whole, the Salem School Committee, September 30th, 2024 at 6:30 PM. This meeting is taking place in person at 29 Highland Avenue, and you can also join via Zoom using the link posted in the meeting agenda. This meeting is called to order. The first item on the committee's agenda is a collective bargaining agreement with the Salem Teachers Union, and I just want to point out that this ratification can only take place in the regular school committee meeting, not a committee of the whole. So the motion tonight will be to recommend it out to ourselves at a regular committee meeting to ratify both the successor contracts for the STU and for a paraprofessional unit. And so happy to open it up for some conversation about the contract, or if there's questions. I just want to start off by saying how grateful I am, both to the members of the STU bargaining team that were present for those discussions, the members of the Personnel Subcommittee who were part of that discussion, and also the administration team, Jill Conrad, Elizabeth Polly, Kate Carbone, Dr. Strike, Colby Brunt. You know, I think contract negotiations are adversarial by structure, but they don't have to be adversarial in tone, and I appreciate that. Everybody came to that table with not 100% agreement on everything, but definitely a shared set of values and goals for where we wanted our district to be, our schools and our educators to be, and how to support our kids. So I'm proud of the contract we landed on. It is going to be a work for us to address the budgetary side of it, and that work starts now. But where we're right now, the contract that's before us for ratification at our next meeting, I think makes our district extremely competitive, treats our teachers fairly in terms of wages, our paraprofessionals fairly and equitably, makes us competitive, provides for the prep time and the paid family leave that we've heard was so important for our educators and our workforce, provides for the equalization of the school day, for feedback from teachers, for families, and I think puts in place a lot of the structures that we're hoping to see around educator attendance as well. So I'm very happy with the contract, and I'm looking forward to ratifying it, recognizing that it will be an expense that we're going to have to work through managing, and we ask the members of our community to work with us in addressing that. And that's part of our conversation later tonight for the committee to discuss.
I'd move to recommend the ratification of the successor contract for both items one and two, for the Salem Teachers Union and the paraprofessional unit to the full school committee.
Second, the motion. We do not have a member participating remotely yet, so I'll take this by a show of hands. All in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Financial outlook. Turn this over to Assistant Superintendent Polly.
Thank you so much. Well, good evening, everyone. And in the spirit of starting to plan early and look ahead at our budget for the next couple of years, we've prepared an overview for you on what our finances and our financial outlook looks like as of today, September 30th. But as a reminder, it's still very early in the year, and so there are many things that we don't yet know. Thank you so much. We don't yet know all that this year will bring, and we don't obviously know all that next year will bring. The city is still finalizing the closeout of FY '24, and almost 80% of our employees just started about a month ago. And so some of our expenses are still not crystal clear. So as a reminder, we spent a lot of time this spring talking about what our budget would look like. Our budget for FY '25, the fiscal year we are in now, is $74,592,616. That is a 4.83% increase over the previous year. And on the right-hand side of this slide, I just showed a historical look at both our budget appropriation and Chapter 70, which, as you know, is the state's primary funding mechanism for public education. So the horizontal bar is our Chapter 70, and the vertical bars are our overall appropriation. So you can clearly see that, and I think this committee knows, that the city of Salem is our largest funder and provides the preponderance of our budget each year. Chapter 70 is about 39% to 40% of our appropriation, and so the other 60% comes from the city. So as I mentioned, it's early, and there are still things we don't know. So I wanted to just walk through what it is we don't know. First, the official enrollment date is October 1. So I hope everyone comes to school tomorrow. That is an important day that helps the state say, this is who's enrolled, this is how many, this is who they are, and that is the basis of our Chapter 70.
Can I just jump in? I did confirm today that our numbers are higher than they were last year at this time. So that's a good sign. Not substantially higher. I think right now it's about 20 more students, but Jen Garapie, who many of you know, who's our systems person, is confident that it will be higher than it was last year at this time. So that's good news. Every additional child is certainly a benefit to the budget. So at the very least, we know our enrollment will not be lower than it was.
Yes. I looked this afternoon, and it looks like today it's 3862, which, to your point, is about 20 kids higher than it was last year on this day. So that is good news. But we don't have our official enrollment. And when we have that, we can start to predict what our Chapter 70 may be. So that is the largest funding that the state provides for public education. But we don't know what the administration will do, what next year will bring. And so there are still plenty of unknowns from revenue, including what the state's commitment to early childhood will look like for the Salem Public Schools. Are there other opportunities for the Salem Public Schools at the state level? And of course, our entitlement grants that come from the federal government, those are driven in part by our enrollment, so we'll see, and our demographics. We'll see what those have in store for us, but those are things we don't know as of September 30th, what those will look like next year. We also don't know exactly what our expenses will look like. So we've talked at this dais about our efforts to become more efficient with our energy usage and our energy costs. We made significant investments this summer in controls. We're changing light bulbs. We're weatherizing the buildings. So we're hoping to reduce our energy costs by becoming more efficient and upgrading our equipment. We don't know what that will yield quite yet, since we're just in process. We don't know, to the superintendent's point, we are confident that our enrollment will grow, or at least stay level, if not grow modestly, but we don't know the growth of our special population. So who our students are makes a difference to both our revenue and expense. And finally, last year and the year before, we saw significant increases in tuition for kids that are sent to external placements for their special education. Some of our placements were 14% more than they had been the previous year, and for some, it was 14% one year and eight the next. So those were significant and really historic increases that we hadn't seen, and we don't know what that's going to look like for next year. So in the spirit of sharing early and starting this conversation so that the committee can have informed and strategic conversations about next year's budget, I made some assumptions. So I met with the city's finance director, Anna Friedman, and we thought it was safe to assume a 2% increase in our Chapter 70. That's about $600,000 annually in our increase in Chapter 70. That's a guess that we have made, but we think it's a conservative one. We're assuming that other sources of revenue, including the charter school reimbursement and our federal entitlement grants, will remain level. So we have not in this accounted for a significant change, one way or the other, in those. And we also assume that our circuit breaker, special ed funding, and our school choice funding also remains level. So everything that you'll see from me is assuming mostly level with a very small bump in Chapter 70.
Thank you, Mayor. If I recall correctly, with respect to enrollment, we also get a specific Chapter 74 allotment based on the number of students that elect to be in a Chapter 74. From a timeline perspective, is that also factored into the assumptions?
I have assumed level. I have not assumed that will grow, and based on what we've seen, that probably will grow. But mostly where I didn't know, I just assumed steady state. And that holds true for the expenses. So in the numbers that I'll show you, I assumed that we keep the same staff that we have today, or Friday. And so those staff will progress along steps, but I did not assume that we have a massive wave of retirements. I did not assume that we are increasing or reducing the number of staff. I just assumed if we have these people for the next three years, this is what it will cost. So I did assume, and you'll see on the slides that follow, that our non-personnel, or NP, expenses will continue to increase. I played with how much those might increase by, so we'll get into that in a minute. But our major cost drivers have been our special education tuition, our transportation, and our utilities. And I did not attempt for tonight to say, oh, I think our special education tuition will go up by X, or our transportation will go up by Y. I do think that will need to be part of the conversation, but because it's so early in the year, I wasn't quite sure what that would tell us. So for now, you'll see in a minute, I've picked different increase amounts for our non-personnel expenses, but still ahead of us is that deep analysis on those three major cost drivers. Any questions before I jump in? Okay. So just, I did want to, because I had assumed that our staff would remain about the same, I wanted to show you, you know, what that is. And so on the left-hand side, I have the staffing percentages by bargaining unit. So the bright green is Unit A of the STU, the teachers, and the blue is the PSRP unit of the STU. Yellow is AFSMI, our custodians, our clerks, our cafeteria workers. Dark green is our SAA. Those are our administrators, our unionized administrators. And the dark blue is non-union, so those would include principals and many of the central office staff. So you can see, 77% of our employees are members of the STU, either in the teacher unit or the PSRP. And on the right, not surprising, is the cost by employee category, and you'll see it looks very similar to the pie chart on the left. Okay, so with the assumption that the number and composition of staff will remain the same, this chart is what I think will happen to our personnel costs. So I'm assuming that the contract that you just recommended to ratify will be ratified. That was the basis of the teacher and PSRP units of the STU projections. The SAA contract is current through the end of this year, so I made some assumptions about increases there. I made some assumptions for non-union, and those were just based on what have we done previously, and I tried to find an average. For AFSMI, their contract expires in 2027, so I assumed that for them, 2027 would look like 2026. That may or may not be the case, but this is how I came to these numbers. And you can see that by FY '27, I am projecting a $68 million personnel budget compared to this year's personnel budget, which is 58.9. So everybody stays the same, but moves down step by step by step and goes up each year. Okay, so knowing that, and it's very helpful to know what our largest expense is, which is our people, I then played out some scenarios for your consideration. So in this scenario, I assumed that our appropriation, which is our overall budget, which is the city of Salem, as well as Chapter 70, would go up by 3.5%. I picked that because that is about average over the last 10 years, what our appropriation has gone up, so it wasn't exactly random. So in the top gray bar, where it says appropriation, in FY '25, we already know our budget this year is $74,592,616. So that's $77 million in FY '26 is 3.5% higher. In FY '27, that's 79% is 3.5% higher than the 77. So that's how that flows. Personnel costs, I just showed you, I applied everybody who works here now to what their contract says, and for everybody who doesn't have a contract, I assumed conservatively, they'd get about what they've gotten before. So that's where I get the 68. Now, in non-personnel, if you were to go to Munis today and download our non-personnel expenses, this $15.9 million is what you would see. Those are our expenses. But remember that, because on the next slide, we're going to come back to this number. So I took our non-personnel expenses, and I estimated a 4% increase for '26 and '27. So I did the same thing. 15.9 times 4% equals 16.6. 16.6 times 4% equals 17.2. The reason I picked 4% is after some conversations and consultations, it seemed like with inflation coming down, that might be about right. So that's why 4% is there. So in the bottom row, you can see with those assumptions, what the deficit would be. And this year, I am not projecting a deficit, because we worked hard in the spring through position reductions, through moving people onto grants, through creative staffing, as well as use of one-time resources, we figured out how to close our deficit. So I am not projecting a deficit for this year. But in FY '26, if these assumptions hold, a 3.5% increase in our budget plus a 4% increase in our non-personnel expenses, it looks like a $2.5 million deficit, and the following year, a 6.2. So before I pause on this, I'm going to flip the slide, because remember I said to keep that $15.9 million expense number in your head. You'll recall that our actual expenses and our published budget are $20,648,158. And what we did to get down to that 15.9 was we applied circuit breaker, school choice, use of reserves, the end of ESER, some of the migrant transportation money. So we used one-time money to get down to $74 million. So our actual expenses in FY '25 are going to be $20.6 million, and we have found a way to cover that. So when I think about a 4% increase on our expenses, it felt like we can consider our expenses here that we've already offset, but we should also, in doing that, consider our actual expenses, which are $20.6 million. So this chart is the same as the one before. The appropriation goes up 3.5% in FY '26, 3.5% in FY '27. Our personnel costs are the same, people applied to what we know our collective bargaining agreements and our average increases have been. But our non-personnel cost estimates are different from the previous slide, and that is because that is what we anticipate spending this year, 20.6. So I applied 4% to that. So that goes up to 21.4, 22.3. So you'll see that does change our deficit numbers to 7.4 next year and 11.2 the year after that, but we can apply our annual revenue that we take in from circuit breaker, from school choice. I did not apply Chapter 74 because I assumed that was level. And that, I think, brings us to a deficit, a likely deficit, based on all these unknowns and assumptions, a $4.4 million next year and $8.2 million in the year after that. I'm going to pause because I know there was a lot of numbers I just threw at you. Any word you want me to keep going?
And I just want to be clear. When we talk about this budget, and we're talking about a 3.5% increase, this doesn't factor in what's not in the school committee's purview, which is all the other things that the city spends on the schools in terms of capital projects, health insurance, et cetera. So
That is such a good point. It does not. So thank you for that. I should have said that on the assumptions page. Our benefits, for example, are paid by the city, but they are not included in these numbers. That is a great, great point.
No worries. Yeah, I think that's important for members of the public listening at home as we talk about these numbers, to understand that while this is the budget that they're seeing, it's not the entire amount that we're allocating on the school side.
That's exactly right. Yeah, thank you for that. That's really important. Okay, so then I was trying to figure out, okay, well, what is a different model that we could look at together? And I looked at a six, it's actually six and almost 4%, I looked at 6.4% increase with that same model of the 4% increase in non-personnel expenses. Why did I look at six? That is significantly higher than our typical appropriation, even with this year's extraordinary appropriation of 4.83 increase. Six would be much higher. I looked at, as people were progressing through their salaries from one year to the next, on average, when I looked at the entirety of our staff, you know, it came out to be like 6.4. So that's where that number came from. And so I looked to see, okay, 74.5 this year, plus 6.4 gets to 79 in FY '26, and 84 in FY '27. Personnel costs stay the same. Non-personnel, this is the non-personnel costs in our budget, so they are increasing by four. And you can see that our projected deficit with those non-personnel cost estimates and a 4% increase is significantly smaller with a 6.3% increase. However, remember, we have to really look at what our actual expenses are. And so when I did that with the same model, our deficit comes to 5.2 next year and 6.7 the following year, which can be offset by our annual revenue of circuit breaker and school choice, to be more like 2.2 and 3.7, 3.8 million. So the last, I believe this is the last scenario I have offered for you, is I looked at a 6% increase with the average of what our expenses have been going up by. So this may be the most realistic in terms of our expenses when we look at what the last few years have been. However, the last few years have been extraordinary. So I offer this just as a point of information. So 6% more than 74.5 is 79.3. 6% more, 79.3 is 84.3. That would be our appropriation. Our non-personnel cost estimates going up by 12% would go up 20.6 million this year to 23.1 and 25.9 by FY '27. That would leave us with a gap of 6.9 and 10.3 respectively in FY '26 and '27, but when we offset that, it becomes 3.9 and 7.3. I don't know that our expenses will go up by 12%. We've come through an extraordinary time. Our expenses may be leveling out. Inflation is coming down. We've invested in weatherization, et cetera, et cetera. But for you to see, that is the average of what our expenses have gone up over the last few years.
Did you look at a scenario with a 3.5% overall increase and a 12% increase in the non-personnel expenses?
I did not.
Okay.
I would be willing to, but I, okay, yeah, sure, I'd be glad to. So what will this potentially mean for Salem? It's still early. However, when I look at, you know, if Chapter 70 continues to be 40% of the budget, and the state continues to fund the charter school reimbursement at about $1 million, and our Chapter 70 increases by about 2%, then the table on the left is what I think this could mean for Salem. So the top gray bar is assuming a 3.5% increase in our appropriation. So this $43.8 million is the estimated local contribution. So that's what's estimated to come from Salem this year. In FY '26, with these assumptions of 3.5, it would be $45.9 million, and in FY '27, it would be 48. So that would be Salem's contribution. That increases annually about $2 million, and $45.9 million is 5% more than $43 million. So that's what the percentages are. If the local contribution, if our appropriation is a 6% increase, that goes up to a $48 million local contribution next year and a $52.5 the year after that. That is a $4.2 million increase for the city of Salem and a $4.4 million increase for the city of Salem. $48 million is 10% higher than where we are now, and for $52 million is 9% higher than 48. So because Salem is our largest funder, and the city is very generous to the schools, I thought that I should share with you, breaking down these assumptions about Chapter 70 remaining about 40% of our funding, this is what it might mean for the city of Salem, with all the caveats of it's still early days in terms of our revenue and expense. So I think the committee and the community has some strategic thinking to do around how we can continue to meet the needs of our students, how we can help them succeed, and in doing so, how are we allocating our personnel and our non-personnel resources? Are we equitably allocating staff? Do we have the right programs? Are they the right sized? And how can we reduce costs in our non-personnel expenses? So I think the good news about having this conversation today is because it is early, we have time for those conversations, for community engagement, for this committee to be very thoughtful. October is when the official enrollment is set. We, in the last couple of years, have begun budget conversations in December, with planning beginning in earnest in January. We may need to do that earlier this year. There has been, at least in my time here, I have observed this committee and this administration very committed to regular engagement with the community around strategic choices that happened all spring and summer. And so we have time for community conversations, which have typically happened, you know, in February, March, but could happen sooner. And then this leads to a budget proposal, which happens in the spring. So that is just a reminder of what the timeline has been and where the opportunities may be. And that cheerful story is the last of my slides. So I'm happy to follow up. I would run the 3.5 with the 11%. I'm happy to run other scenarios, and I do think as each week goes by, we'll know more about what our revenue and expenses look like. So thank you.
In the last year for Student Opportunity Act is FY '27. Is that correct?
Right.
Questions? Amber Cruz.
I think the one piece that I would just offer on the scenarios as we go through this and folks kind of examine them, our purviews on the school side of things, and as I think about Scenario 2 and Scenario 3, I would just name what I think, you know, the mayor's thinking on his head, like getting that additional 2.5% increase means trade-offs in other city services and other expenses. So I think the piece that I would just name for the public as we think about the financial outlook of the district, is that when we say that this is going to be a citywide strategic conversation, and that we need folks to engage, I think we mean that in earnest, because getting to these types of allocation without an increase on the Chapter 70 side, if that stays flat, is going to be pretty difficult to get to, given, I think, the hoops we had to jump through for the 4.8%, which is the highest that I've seen since I've been on the committee. So I named that because I think, you know, the members of the public that might be tuning in and wondering about how we get there, it's not simple math by any means, and it means that we're going to have to think about both sides of the coin in a really thoughtful manner, because, you know, I'm grateful to live in a community that has always layered on the supports for schools, and I recognize that there are other services that we've made those trade-offs over a period of time in which now we're experiencing a housing crisis. You know, folks are You know, folks are hurting with respect to their cost of living and the city's doing a lot of other important projects to keep our community, one that folks can stay in, live in and thrive. So I named that because I know that that's not an easy conversation for folks to have around this table because our focus is on what happens and with kids and school buildings. But I do think that that's the tenor of the type of conversation we'll have over the next three years.
Thanks. Yeah, you know, I'll just add to that, you know, our, our new growth last year was about $1.1 million. So if you're looking at a $12 million projected increase in personnel costs for one, just for the school department alone, to put it into context over the next three years, new growth alone won't carry that and our fixed costs go up by about 6.5 million a year. So schools and city combined. We are in the process of settling contracts with other bargaining units in the, in the city. And that's, you know, I think also going to be foremost in our minds, thinking about putting together a future budget for next year and the year after. So I'll just say, just echoing what Member Cruz said, that I think that the larger financial picture is extremely challenging and, you know, we're prepared to meet it. That's our commitment. But we want, want to do so in a way that's not going to make Salem an unaffordable place for people to live that have to pay their taxes. So that's going to be the work of the next, the next several months. Nothing else?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think I might just suggest, it's not my purview how the committee wants to organize this, but it wouldn't, I, I would recommend that maybe the finance subcommittee start meeting earlier to start looking at different scenarios of programs, services, potentially, you know, positions that are, I mean, everything's mission, I mean, everything is important, but there are things that are less mission critical that we should begin examining now and get ahead of it and, and, and begin having those conversations transparently for the public also to hear. I mean, they're public meetings to start discussing because we're going to have to, I mean, there's still rightsizing that has to happen. I mean, granted, our enrollment has increased, which is great, but we're still, you know, we still have been careful since the pandemic not to fully right-size because, you know, we, we had needs and we were adjusting to the transition back to schools. But I think we have to have some hard conversations. Yes, I appreciate the city, you know, doing their part and we'd love to get more from the state. But we also have some internal rightsizing that we've started to do. We did some of it already. But, you know, I think it would be, it would behoove us to start early, Ms. Manning, in your capacity, to bring the group together so that we can be, you know, get ahead of this as early as possible and start, you know, circulating some possible ideas amongst the committee and, and the public well in advance of the budget, you know, the typical budget season.
And I would just suggest, I think there are probably a couple of things hanging out there that it would be good that if, if those things were underway when finance started to look at some of these bigger picture items we're talking about. One thing that comes to mind, for example, is the high school staffing schedule kind of thing. That's sort of a, has a life of its own outside of finance, but we would need the determination from that as part of that, I think. And I'm sure there are other things like that that we'll come up with.
Nothing else? Is, uh, Member Campbell joined us yet? She is.
I, I am, yeah, I'm here. I have one comment to make. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. I agree completely on the starting early, but I would also just flag that I think in situations like this, some more often that we can do perhaps committees of the whole or work the finance subcommittee schedule around other members' availability to watch it. Because obviously they get participation of committee, I think these conversations would be important for lots of people to have at least witnessed so that when the budget comes forward, I know sometimes it can feel like, well, where did this come? Where did that come from? And I think especially with these types of conversations, it can be helpful for everyone to have the context and to know sort of where the district is coming from and where the finance subcommittee has laid out on these things. So I think, you know, making sure that the maximum amount of like observation or participation from other committee members possible would be really helpful.
Thank you for that. Yeah, we can co-post the finance subcommittee as committee of the whole so that other members can participate or attend if they want. Any further? See, nothing else? The next item on our agenda is the exploration of Salem High School's schedule and we, the update is there. We don't have an update at this point, so I think there'll be a topic for future conversation.
Yeah, unfortunately, the individual who was going to come and share information was unable to. And so that'll, we'll bring that forward in a future, probably, committee of the whole discussion, to your point, Ms. Manning.
Could I just ask one question on that? Were they going to come and give us an understanding of, right now, like, status quo? Okay, not, nothing's like begun on the conversation.
Yeah, so I can just share that we had an organization work with us through a grant from the department that helped Salem High with its scheduling this year to make it, I think it was a much better process than it had been. And through helping, Mark's team was very involved with the organization, it's called Timely. And through that process, they identified a significant amount of inefficiencies in terms of the number of courses that we offered, some class sizes that were very, very small and, and places where we're very much overstaffed. And, and I do have, I have that information. I had wanted somebody who was a little more expert than me to share that. But we have it and it's for this current school year.
Okay.
And they did all the planning work up, up this school year. So that, I think it's valuable for the committee to look at this information.
Yeah, okay. I just wondered what exactly they were going to be reporting on. Okay.
The last item on our agenda pertains to Salem Academy Charter Schools Enrollment Expansion Application. So a copy of a letter from Dr. Zrak's been provided. Do you want to speak to this?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I can.
Kind of a late addition to our.
Yeah, I can speak to this issue. You know, I think there's two things at play here. You know, one is, I'll start with, you know, the application. Charters do apply for additional seats. I've been through that as a superintendent in multiple districts and Salem's been through that. All of you who have been on the committee know that there are charter seats that are available and there's a cap. And unfortunately Salem fell below the 10% of districts, the lowest 10% of districts based on data from two years ago. Didn't, it's not inclusive of the performance of our, the last MCAS round, which for Salem was, was better than what we've seen in a long time, which is great news and we'll be sharing that at the next school committee meeting, on Monday's school committee meeting. But the, so the, the cap is lifted, which is typically a 9% cap of net school spending, funding, can go up to 18%. And so this is happening with Lynn right now. It's, there's other, you know, districts that have additional cap space. And we feel like I'm talking like the NFL here, but we do have additional cap space that charters can apply for. I, I would submit in my letter, I have a lot of concerns about expansion for Saks, given that I think Salem Public Schools has made a tremendous amount of progress. We've, I think we have the data to demonstrate in many cases, we're outperforming Saks or not far behind it. And we certainly have a different population. We serve a different population. We have newcomers arriving each and every day. We have a, many substantially separate programs. I'll give you an example, just three weeks, just three, I talked to Jamal over at New Liberty. Three Salem Academy students have started in the last few weeks at New Liberty. These are students that, and, you know, they, they speak to a dropout rate of 0%. Well, the students come to us as their last chance and then the district that gets the dropout is Salem Public Schools. If the students don't end up performing, you know, they struggle in school. You know, while I appreciate the work that Salem Academy does and not anti-charter, I do think in the context of the Salem Public Schools and I've shared, I've laid out where I think, you know, we're demonstrating tremendous progress, we're serving kids well, our enrollment is growing as a school system. And we're, you know, we're the top performing gateway city when it comes to meeting performance targets. We, you know, we met more performance targets than Saks. And while I'm not here to just compare Salem Public Schools to Saks, the reality is I don't think this community right now needs a shift in seats. I think that would send an additional $1.26 million out if Saks is applying for 70 additional seats, which would be very harmful to a district that is trying to serve every kid, every child that arrives. And you all know that we, the doors are always open and students arriving at all, all the time. And that would be a drain to our efforts to best support our young people. So I think this is significant and I, I, I do, while I appreciate what Saks does, I do think we have a strong case to show, to demonstrate that we are serving the children of this, this city well. And we will continue to do so and there isn't a need for seats to be shifted from the Salem Public Schools to Saks. So I think I lay that out and I, I mean, there's many more data points that we can continue to, to share. And this will, you know, form, at the very least, a letter from me to the Commissioner and the Board of Education. And I do think will also form, you know, a letter that, you know, will circulate amongst our families and, and the community as well. I just wanted you to see my initial thinking from this letter that I, this memoir I wrote this weekend. Additionally, I'm, I'm very, I, I, I don't think it's a secret. I'm not pleased with the process that Saks engaged in here around the, the application. We have regular conversations with the school over a lot of different things, safety, they attend our safety meetings, transportation. We, we have had conversations in September about students that have returned to our school, families that they have concerns about or that we have concerns about and vice versa. There has been, there's a decent amount of communication. Our special education teams have a fair amount of communication with Saks. And the fact that, you know, I, I can only speak for myself, I learned of this through the mayor of their application a day before this was to be submitted to the Department of Education, the deadline, is troubling to me. And then when I, you know, I, I reached out to the, to the executive director and the team, we were, you know, it was, it was, it was clear that there was some evasiveness happening. And that's when I looked at the fact, at the agenda, that there had already been a vote by their board the prior Friday and that there had been, you know, a discussion had taken place regarding this. And we, you know, the Salem Public Schools was not, never made aware that this was a discussion. I mean, I think we would have very much been open to a dialogue about their interests and, and what their intent was. But that opportunity never came. And I frankly, I was shocked, given the amount of communication that exists, that that, that, that opportunity never came to, to me. And I'm, again, I'm speaking for myself because I do have regular dialogue with the executive director at the school. And so there's a lot of frustration about that process. We work in the same city. We serve the same children. We serve the same families. We have a vested interest collectively. And this should be a colla, the, the application should have, while we may not have agreed to all aspects of the, the applicant, of the request, at least there would have been a dialogue and a discussion about how we could best serve the young people of this city and that never happened. And that to me is incredibly frustrating. I, I don't feel, in looking at the agenda, that it was posted within the required time limits. I also don't think the agenda clearly delineated what was going to be discussed. The agenda item at their board meeting said very simply, enrollment parentheses, vote. That is not clear indication to me or to any member of the public that would have had an interest in commenting that they were going to be talking about an expansion of seats, which is not an insignificant decision and has, again, huge implications for the Salem Public Schools and for the City of Salem moving forward. So I think that's detailed in my memo. I'm going to stop there and turn it over to the committee. But I feel very strongly about both concerns about the application itself and, and, and the need for this right now. And then, of course, the process. And I think a lot should, needs to be discussed about the relationship between the two organizations and schools moving forward.
Open up the discussion from the committee, Member Manning?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions for the superintendent, but before I say that, I, I do want to be very clear about the fact is I'm not shocked at all. Not one bit. If, if I have a couple of questions about the letter.
Sure.
Is that for discussion now or do?
I'll leave that up to the chair.
I don't know how much we want to get into the weeds of that, but I just.
This is a letter, the letter in the packet is a letter to the school committee members. This is not a letter to, to the state.
No, this is a letter to this, to all of you.
Yeah, okay. I just, so if you could just maybe, not, not right now, but clarify. On the second page, the one, two, three, four, fifth bullet, and it talks about the average turnover. Okay, and that at the academy, the last three years, it's been 32% in the staff. And in the Salem Public Schools, it's been 23. And then you go on to say that this is not inclusive of the current school year, which we anticipate to be the highest in recent history. It's not clear to me, reading that.
It's very poorly worded.
You're, you're.
So what, what it.
You're.
And that was pointed out to me by another committee member today.
Okay, so you're referring to the academy.
Wonder who?
So I.
Which, which school are you referring to?
So I'm saying, so our, our retention, we believe, the Salem Public Schools retention for this current school year, we believe to be the highest in recent history.
Not turnover.
Not turnover. It should have said, it should have said retention.
Well, should have said which school you were talking about.
I meant Salem Public Schools. I have no idea what the retention is at the academy for this current school year.
So we're talking.
Yes, but I believe our teacher retention for this school year is the highest in recent history.
Okay. And could you come up just with, and this is just sort of a point of interest, based on a long history with me of some kind of a little data explanation of what year students are in when they do return in the last few years? And when is the dates, what are the dates that these returns take place?
Yeah, so I, Mark and I started this dialogue and I can get you more. I don't have the hard data. What we had picked off, Mark and I are still trying to figure out if this is right. We had 21 students in the last year who returned. That is not inclusive, I don't think, of the recent returnees that I just mentioned. Most students are come, we do know that we have a lot of students return to us from eighth to ninth grade. A lot of students come back to the high school for that period of time. And then there are a fair number of students throughout their high school years, less so in middle school, but more so in high school that end up coming back to us. I would also say, there's also a fair number of students and Monique, or Jen is here too, somewhere. Oh, there's Jen, sorry, Jen. Right next to Monique, that, you know, there are cases of students who are placed out of district as well, who are not, cannot be served there, who we end up, they're essentially coming back to us because then we are paying for the out of district placement for that, for those students. But I, I can get you more.
But yeah, but the other part of the question is.
Sure.
What, when in the school year are they coming back?
I can get.
In other words, October 1st.
Yeah, after October 1st, right. I, I don't know that to, I, I don't have that hard data right now. I'd have to.
But that, I would be interested.
I can look at that for you.
But like I said, I'm not shocked.
Member Cornell?
I just, I, I wrote my, my comments down and then I have some questions. I had to write, I don't usually write my comments down, but I feel very frustrated by this. So I don't, I just want to say that I don't begrudge any parent or guardian who puts their child into the lottery system. You know, Rachel Hunt is a friend of mine, the founder of Saks. But I, I do have, I want to just be clear, problems with the charter system on a philosophical level because it is a financial drain on the district and we have no say in instruction or governance. And this district needs every dollar, particularly right now, because unlike a charter school, which doesn't have to, for example, pay its teachers a competitive wage through labor negotiations and doesn't have to serve all students, we do and we want to pay our teachers a competitive wage and we just settled this contract. So I find the idea of giving an additional $3 million or a $1 million and change out when this district is making such incredible improvements and has made such a strong investment in our teachers, I find insulting. As a school committee member, I'm troubled by Saks's board's choice not to engage with Salem Public School District, which provides both costly transportation services and bridges the gap in insufficient state funding. But I'm probably more troubled as a Salem resident by the prospect that the deliberation of vote by Saks was purposely deceptive so as not to invite public input and participation. I find that insulting as a community member. So I just wanted to, to make those two points. And I've looked at, I've looked at the minutes, I've looked at the agenda and I think it is deceptive is the only word that I can use for it. I have a lot of questions about how they arrive at some of the conclusions that they've come to. So for example, you know, 50% of Salem students entering the lottery, eligible students, I, I can't even understand how they would arrive at that number. Lots of people apply, put their names into the lottery and so they have. And so they have this sort of fictional causation, right? Where, or this fictional leap that they're making that if one puts one's name into the lottery, they will automatically go if they get a spot, which is not the case, right? So lots of people apply to lots of things and they don't take a spot. So in terms of, you know, making some counter arguments, I find that one confusing, that simply because you have an influx of applications, when you're losing students each year into high school, it seems like a difficult argument to make. So I'd like, this is not stuff for right this second, but I would like to sort of dig into this a little more deeply about how to make that case with the State Department of Education. I think I had another question. I think that, I think that might be it, but I just think, I'd like to continue, you know, I think I'd like some more information. And this might be, as a community member in Salem, I need to go to the Board of Saks to find out exactly how this information has arrived at.
Just respond to that.
Yeah.
I should let you know, I did file a records request asking the same question you asked, is how they arrived at that data point of 50% of the students? Because it doesn't, even if that's, the math that they shared did not add up to what I see as the number of fifth graders that are in the Salem Public Schools. So I did ask for that information along with information about, I also wanted to know a little more about the discussions that they had leading up to this. I mean, the, they were presumably notified sometime in the spring that there was the opportunity to have more seats and then, or to apply for more seats. But I wanted to know what other documentation, what other discussions may have occurred that are, you know, matters of public record. And so those were some of the, and I also asked for information on teacher retention from last year to this year, because I presume, I really do believe the gap has even grown more in terms of retaining teachers between the two organizations. So those are three things I requested more information on.
Thanks. I think, member Campbell, you had a comment?
I said, yes, thank you. I agree with both member Manning and member Cornell in terms of the disappointment with the process and also had some of the big questions around data requests. I found the agenda to be very vague and the minutes seemed to show that there has been deliberation around this topic for quite some time, which again, I find disappointing that there was no engagement with either the public or broadly or with the Salem Public Schools. So I won't belabor the points that my, the other members have made. But the one thing I do want to flag for the community, if you may be watching or interested, is the idea of like this 10%. I think it's really important to kind of put that in context, not to say that there's not work to do or that that's the place you want to be, but percentages by definition, there will always be the same number of districts that fall below of the 10% marker. There always has to be a bottom 10%, regardless of overall performance. And so I just want to flag that that 10% metric to me mathematically is not really a valid way to assess annual progress, progress towards targets, progress towards growth. And so I would instead say, community members who are watching, family needs caregivers, even students, look up at the most recent accountability metrics, that that is a much greater indication of progress that's being made in the Salem Public Schools. Because again, regardless of how in the bottom 10% perform mathematically, there always has to be a 20%. So if everything needs to be perfect, single, equal, and every student is performing, there will always be a bottom, type of things that are really important you want to have within this conversation.
Thanks, member. Little hard to hear towards the end there, but any further comments, member Cruz?
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate the superintendent submitting this letter, the detail, and certainly I'm aligned with the contents of it and definitely agree with my colleagues with respect to the process here. I think the last part where member Campbell was cutting off was around that 10% distinction and how it gets determined. I think one of the things that I've learned with my other hat on as a legislator is that Desi, you know, is, has interpreted the law to create that bottom 10% solely based on MCAS scores and has the ability to use other factors. And there really isn't a deliberative process by which they're going about doing this. It's, it's really something that's happening on the backend. And I do think that that's problematic and that there is an interest actually on Beacon Hill to, I think, put some pressure on Desi to take a more holistic view of how districts make their way into the bottom 10% of districts solely based on MCAS scores. So that's one piece. The other piece that I would just name is that, you know, this committee operates under the public records law, open meeting law. We've had our own issues in the past with violations of the open meeting law. This committee has done trainings to satisfy the restorative kind of actions that you have to take when you violate the open meeting law. And the importance of transparency in our decision making when it comes to our schoolchildren and our educators is so critical. We are a democratically elected school committee that does the work every single month to work with our community to ensure that they know what's happening from a governance standpoint within our schools. And I know that my colleagues will often joke about the parliamentary nature of my role here on the committee, where I'll point out rules and, yeah, I know, I know. But I do think that the reason why that is so important is because we have all seen as a community what happens when transparency, trust and communication break down. It does lead to folks experiencing real wounds and negative impacts. And I think in this particular case, you know, what I find most compelling is the difference between what I thought was a great relationship here and the relationship between Lynn and their charter. I mean, three weeks before they have the Lynn Education District, there's constant communication and collaboration. I haven't seen that level of collaboration exist in such a public forum. And I would just ask that as we continue to have conversations with SAC about how do we get to a more strategic alignment when it comes to the education of our children? Because we do have that shared value of making sure that they're all being well-served, that we are having more conversations with them about the bigger picture in Salem when it comes to the education of our children. I mean, we're talking about reconfiguration within our district. We have resourcing that I think is really unique when it comes to our staffing. And I do think that as we engage with SAC, we need to talk about the financial outlook of the city. They're going to be looking to build a new school at the same time we're looking to build a new high school. So my stake in the ground here is that this is absolutely something that merits conversation, concern, and that I hope that with members of the public, with our various union leaders, that we can, you know, bring SAC into the fold of having actual dialogue about what's needed to ensure that all of our children in Salem have a high quality education. And that should include where we can share practices when it comes to governance, because I recognize we have a different spotlight on us as democratically elected school committee members, but there are also public servants on that board, folks that are members of our community, our neighbors, our friends in many instances, and folks that I've certainly known for a long time. And I think that the, that governance being as strong as it can be is super important so that these breakdowns in communication, trust and transparency do not happen and we don't find ourselves in a position where we're at odds. And I know members of this committee, regardless of, you know, how they feel about the larger systemic framework, like the mayor and I split ourselves into pieces to be able to go and attend graduation at the Salem Academy, at Salem High School, to visit classrooms because we care deeply about those kids, those families, and yes, those educators as well. So, you know, I think that's my extension to the superintendent is, you know, as we think about engaging with SAC, that it can't just be about this one issue, which is certainly a lot of conversation, but it also has to be about the communication going forward.
Yep. Member Manning?
A couple of things. One, if we're, if we're looking into the ongoing relationship and the communication, et cetera, over the last many years, I would, I would like for somebody to take a look at, if you could give me some type of a list of innovation that the charter school has shared with the Salem Public Schools? Because my understanding from the beginning of the charter schools is part of their mission because they had the ability as a charter to go forth and do innovative things in innovative ways, that part of that responsibility is to share then some of that or all of that information, or at least, you know, parts of it, different, different programs, different, whatever they're doing with the Salem Public Schools. And I would like to say I've been waiting over 20 years, but I gave up waiting years ago. I can come up with nothing, maybe something more recent. But, you know, if we're looking into how, how the relationship is, you might want to look in that aspect of it also. And also, Mr. Cruz, I would just want to take exception with one thing that you're saying, because we may have had a, an issue, a specific question about an open meeting law or just, you know, discretion or something. I don't remember it, but I'm not saying there wasn't one. But I, I think I'm pretty safe saying it certainly wasn't intentionally. And this is clearly a planned move. And I don't, I don't think there's been any situation where this, this school committee or in the past, because I've been sitting in on them since 87 and on them since 2015, no 16, I haven't seen that kind of move. And I don't think that we've ever been accused of that. So I don't want the public to think that we have been accused or have committed the same kind of movement that we're talking about here tonight from the charter. I just want to make that clear.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that I wasn't equating our previous violations of the open meeting law that was documented. It was over four years ago in which a member of the public filed an open meeting law complaint. And we were required as part of that complaint to take an additional training by the Attorney General's Office. My, my larger point being is that we are held accountable and to a standard that is super important in keeping the public's trust. And we didn't object to that open meeting law complaint. We signed up for the training right away and we were with fidelity. So I just wanted to be clear that I wasn't equating the two different, the two different issues. I think, you know, the superintendent in his letter does note that he will be filing a complaint of the open meeting law. And I think the Attorney General, it'll be her purview and her team's purview to go examine that. But it's a good clarification to make because when it comes to big strategic decisions, I think folks have seen over the years and certainly as long as I've been on the committee and I've watched school committee meetings, we mull a lot here over process. We talk about everything and, you know, when we violate, when we have violated the open meeting law, it has been, you know, missed, a misstep in how we may have posted something or, you know, you know, the minutes and keeping up with that, so.
Right. It's nothing to the level that we're talking.
To the level of, precisely.
I just don't, I wanted to clear that up.
So you and I are in total agreement there.
Thank you.
Let the record reflect that I was not the chair of this committee four years ago when, whatever that was.
Okay.
Any other members want to offer comment or feedback on this topic? I, I'll just, I don't want to reiterate something that's been said over and over again, but I think this, just disappointment is like the key expression that I'm feeling. It really feels like it's not in the spirit of where our district is right now. It doesn't, and I, to member Cruz's point, I think the educators and the staff and the kids and the, the community members who serve on that board are, are friends and neighbors and they are doing so, I know with what they think is the best intent of the kids that they serve. We have a responsibility to the larger community and it feels like this is particularly a time when we're seeing achievements that's contrary to, you know, the, the numbers that might have predicated this being an opportunity for the charter school to avail themselves of based on data from two years ago. And we're not seeing that now. We're seeing the opposite, in fact, where Salem Public Schools is outperforming the charter school in many respects. We're just finished a very difficult conversation about substantial financial challenges and difficulties. And now we're looking at something where a potential $1.3 million is going to additionally be deprived from, from the public school district. And then just a larger point around communication and transparency. I mean, the fact that we're having this conversation here in public on SATV, you know, posted meeting available for anyone to attend and share their thoughts with us as committee members about this, as we talk about this is just, I think, testament to the standard that we hold ourselves to. And the, the level of communication that we've tried to maintain with the charter school leadership, at least since my, coming into office, I feel, I had felt was very strong. We tried to have regular communication around concerns that mutually impacted our schools and our kids, our roadways, our community. And it does feel like a complete breakdown of that, of that communications. And I have to say, I don't feel like it's a breakdown on, on the side of the Salem Public Schools. Whether or not it was intentional, I can't, I'm not going to speculate, but it feels like it was a colossal mistake.
Linesided, sounds pretty good.
Yeah. So, and on that, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to, to sign on to an objection to the application to the, to Desi and also to sign on to the open meeting law complaint. Because I believe that it, you know, as, as member Cruz said, we set ourselves up to a high standard when we're public boards and the Salem Academy Charter School Board is a public board and should be held to the same standards that every other board and committee that is a public body in the city is held to, particularly when making consequential decisions of this nature. I don't believe a vote is necessary. I defer to the parliamentary.
No.
To the vice chair.
To circulate the letter.
Okay. If, if members want to see, want to be a part of.
It's in, the complaint is in the packet.
The open meeting law complaint is in your packet. If you would like to be added in your individual capacity as a school committee member, see Shirley in the superintendent's office and she'll be able to do that.
Can I just add two things? I just want to, just two, two other things that I want to point out. With the Department of Education, it is frustrating to me and Manny references is like, is the fact that Salem Public Schools does not have one school in the bottom 10%. Not one school by their own accountability system. We only have one school in the bottom 20%, which is Collins right now, which just came out of the bottom 10%. But the fact that the accountability system that is used to evaluate schools is not the same that is used to make very painful decisions around how resources are used is very troubling to me. And it is part of the law. It's baked in the law right now and that's what Desi will point to. But something has to change because we're being held to a different standard. We're being told that we have these targets that we have to meet and we meet those targets to the tune of better than any other gateway city, to the tune of better than the charter school who's trying to take our seats. And yet, we're going to be subjected to possibly losing seats. It makes absolutely no sense that that's the case. I just would like the public also to know that what we should be hearing from the department relatively soon about when the board will take up the application, which I would submit is not a, is not a authentic application because it wasn't voted on in a, in an appropriate manner, in my opinion. But the board will take up all charter applications in either December or January. We should be finding out soon when the discussion will occur. And there'll be an opportunity for the public to comment, for letters to be written, letters to be shared, and I will pass that along to the committee. But I still contend, and the open meeting law complaint contends, that this, their application should be voided. I would just want to be clear, my, this is my opinion, I'm not sharing that. I mean, I don't, the committee can disagree or agree, but I believe that it should be voided. And the Department of Education will receive this complaint from us or from whoever decides to sign on to suggest just that, that it should be voided.
Back to you, Mayor.
Number Cornell?
I just want to add one thing because I do think it's important for the public to understand the implications for us as a district. So the district educates 8% more high needs kids than the charter, 8% more multilingual learners than the charter, 12% more low income kids than the charter, and 7% more kids with disabilities than the charter. So when we're talking about $1.3 million, that makes a difference for kids, all kids. But, but when we look at the vulnerable populations that, that this district does and should support, that really matters. And so it feels, you know, it feels especially fraught and, and like a moral imperative, in my opinion, to make sure that we keep these dollars in our district so that the kids who need it most get the services that they need and deserve.
No further comments? We have nothing further on the agenda, so is there a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole?
Move to Horizon Report.
Move to Horizon Report, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Under discussion? All in favor? Any opposed, seeing none?
Do you have to do a roll call?
Oh, that's right.
Oh, that's right. Member Campbell?
Yeah.
You move. Member Hoffman? Member Cornell?
Yes.
Member Miranda?
Yes.
Member Manning?
Yes.
Member Cruz?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Now we can rise and report.